Call to order, the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission for May 16th, 2023. First item up this evening is the pledge, and we will have a presentation of the flag by local National Guardsmen and Veterans Group. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for this opportunity to present the flags, and thanks to Specialist Hamburger and Private Massey from the Army National Guard, who also serve as a color guard for the American Legion posts. I have a short presentation here for you about the American Legion Post. This is, the post here is the Matthew Brew Post Three, and it's the only Legion Post in Dickinson, North Dakota here. American Legion was basically started back in 2000, or 1919, by the US Congress, and had over a million people. And Dickinson had its first post in 1919, so we're a hundred and four years old. Today, we've got 2 million members, and our foundation is basically those four pillars, and they're not showing up on my screen here. Look at that. But I can get you, though. Anyway, national security is one of the foundation pillars. We promote 100% Americanism. We also promote children and youth kinds of activities, and we also do veterans affairs and rehabilitation. Next screen. Flick it. Oh, it is. Oh, didn't see it. Okay. These are some of the things that we did in terms of highlights, that we've been very active politically. We were responsible for the US Flag Code, the American Legion Baseball, started back in 1925, Boy State, which we send people to here in North Dakota and elsewhere, and Boy State is really one of the places where we have youth go through self-governing process, oratorical contests based on the US Constitution, GI Bill of Rights in 1943, National Emergency Fund, Agent Orange benefits, and we also were responsible for the Junior Shooting Sports Competition in 1991. American Legion is one of the strongest lobbying efforts at our national capital here, and we're very pro-veteran, as you might imagine here. Matthew Brew Post was named after Matthew Brew, and he died in World War I. And as a matter of fact, in 1918, in the Muzar Gon Front. He was from Manning, a ranch south of Manning, and there are still relatives up there. We actually have a lot of his memorabilia from World War I in our, in the pavilion on our display case up there. The current officers are Allen Fair, the adjutant is Todd Otto, I'm the vice commander, the honor guard is Art Warner, post commander is Stan Davis, Chrissy Turner is Communication Officer. We have a Legion Riders Group, which is a motorcycle group that participates in parades and rides, and Dean Katermes is important, is the person responsible for that. And then, of course, our sergeant-at-arms is Specialist Truman Hamburger. We don't have a club, we're called a homeless post, but we do meet up at the Stark County Veterans Pavilion. And of course, as you know, that was put together by veterans and various groups, and it's organized and coordinated through Dickinson Park and Rec. And veterans have free use of the pavilion, and of course, our Legion Club basically meets up there. These are some of the Legion families that we have, the American Legion Riders, and some of these people are, you can recognize these guys because they're the ones that do the thunder rides at the celebrations in July 4th, and the Capitol, and things like this. Now, we don't have a very large group here, but we do participate in some of that kind of activity locally. We partner with the Legion Auxiliary, and the Legion Auxiliary is the spouses of veterans who are members of the Legion, and the president is Shirley Herbal here. And note that the state auxiliary president is Sandra Peterman, and she's from Dickinson. These are some of the activities again, oratorical competition, Legion Baseball, we do donate funds to the Legion Baseball, several thousand dollars a year, and we do participate in flag honoring situations at the beginning of the season, especially at tournaments, and when we carry out the flags. We do participate in the July 4th Parade, and we hand out little flags. We basically, and this is wrong, we handed out about 4,000 flags last year at the parade, these little small flags. We do organize the Veterans Day and the Memorial Day celebrations, and our ceremonies, I should say, and I'm the emcee for that, and we always try to hold that at Dickinson State University, and we're going to have that this year again at DSU in Stickney Auditorium. We also do something rather unique. We get culled bison from the Theater Roosevelt National Monument. We basically field dress those, put them in a chiller, take them to Butcher Block in Mandan, their process, we bring it back, and we distribute it, that meat to needy veterans here locally, and then throughout the state. And last year, we distributed probably about 3,000 pounds of meat, which is pretty amazing. We also put out grave markers showing veteran status, and we were doing this last week in preparation for Memorial Day, and these are round emblems, and we have grommets in the back, and we put down flags. We also work very closely with Brian Benish, and Brian Benish, as you all know, is the man who puts the little flags by every veteran's grave in all the cemeteries. Our fundraising is based on state gaming. We have a state gaming license, we have a raffle, and we have pull tabs, and we have that at Sanford's Grubbin Pub. We also have a concessions trailer, and we've been down here on First and First, and we always have bratwursts and hamburgers and things like that. And of course, we always accept donations, and we do get quite a bit of donations from people who want to do something for the veterans, don't know what to do, so they contact the Legion. Again, these are some of the things that we donate to. We actually donate to the 816th Morale Welfare and Organization to help with retention. We help with the police and sheriff and various kinds of programs. We promote 100% Americanism as best as we can, and of course, the children and the youth situation. We also sponsor the Scouts, both Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts here in town. Again, we use our funds from gaming to help with the veterans, and we do this again with the injured military wildlife. The Quilts of Valor, if you haven't heard about that, Quilts of Valor, the quilts are made by a group in Mandan, and they are hand-sewn, put together, and they are given to veterans who have experienced combat or have been in war situations. And we have presented about 20 kilts over the last year. Indeed, I was one of the recipients of one of the Quilts of Valor, and it's really a very nice, touching ceremony. We do sponsor the place, the Dillon's Crossing, for homeless veterans. We give gas and grocery cards to veterans in need, and it's amazing how many veterans we have that will call the Legion up and say, "I'm passing through, I'm out of money, I need something to get to the next stop," and whatever, and we do have cards for that. And then we fill in some gaps, and veterans need, we work very closely with Jessica Clifton, who is the Veterans Administration here in Stark County. So do you have any questions about the American Legion here? If any of you are veterans and have served one day, you can be a member of the American Legion Post, and it really is a very good organization. There's nothing like being with a bunch of veterans, to be able to share stories and talk, and just have nice camaraderie. We'll even take Coast Guardsmen. We have a couple. And someone asked me, like, "Which army do you have to be in?" And I said, "Well, preferably in the service of the United States Military." We actually had a person who was a veteran from a different army. I think the guy was from, now, he might have been either Mexican or Indian, I forget which, but you have to be serviced in the United States Military. Any questions? Anyone might have?
Any questions for Dr. Brown?
Yep. I worked for Dickinson State University for 20-some years, and as vice president, president, and dean of arts and sciences, and instructor, and I recognize some of you people who are in my classes, and just to remind you, I can change grades yet. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll proceed with first item this evening, which is the Order of Business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. There is no change to the Order of Business this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the Order of Business? Look for a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Otterman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion on the Order of Business? All of them in favor of the Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that commissioners wish to discuss? There's no discussion on the consent agenda. I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Move into our non timetable agenda. First item up is National Public Works Week Proclamation. And before I begin the proclamation, Mr. Zurov, do you have anything to say?
Good afternoon, President Decker and Commission. I don't know if we have the slide. There we go. Public Works is the thread that connects us all. No matter where we live in the world, every Public Works professional strives to improve the quality of life for the community they serve, leading to healthier, happier communities. Each year, Public Works has a theme, and the theme is this year on your screen. This year's theme is connecting the world, which highlights the way Public Works professionals and, excuse me, Public Works professionals connect us physically through infrastructure and inspirational, through service to their communities, whether as first responders or daily workers carrying out their duties. Want to let you know that internally, we're going to have a Public Works celebration next week, but that in June 29th of this year, we're going to have a celebration in Legacy Square. That evening, we're going to have hot dogs, equipment, and bouncy houses for anybody that wants to attend, and we'll have more advertising for that coming out. And I did want to say, I'm currently vice president of the North Dakota Chapter of Public Works, and this year, we've been fortunate to receive a grant to help us defray the cost for this event. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zurov. I'll proceed with the proclamation. National Public Works Week Proclamation, May 21st through the 27th of 2023. Connecting the world through Public Works. Whereas, Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Dickinson. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, excuse me, rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for all citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and the children in Dickinson to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and the Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now resolved, I, Scott Decker, President, do hereby designate the week, May 21st through May 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the state to be affixed. I would look for a motion?
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Looking forward to that presentation, Mr. Zurov, in the new Legacy Square, so I think you had some people down there that touched a truck, too, last weekend. I think the kids were very excited again for that event. Okay, we'll move on now to our second item. We have gaming site authorization. This will be handled by city administrator Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have several gaming site authorization requests to approve this evening, requests for approval. First one we're going to start with is going to be the Dickinson Youth Activities. They have six requesting approval this evening. The first one will be the Grand Dakota Lodge, located at 532-15th Street West. This will have an effective date of July 1st of 2023 to June 30th of 2024. This would be for electronic pull tab devices, sports pools, pull tab jars, and 21. City staff has reviewed and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on this site? Mrs. Winko, with it being one organization with multiple, do we need to do individual approvals, or just an approval for that?
Mr. President, I envision that there probably aren't going to be any issues here, so if Mr. Dossinger just wants to go through them and then vote on them as a total?
All for Dickinson Youth. And we'll just do the organizations underneath. Okay.
Thank you. Second one for Dickinson Youth Activities can be the Elks Lodge, 1137, which is located at 501 Elks Drive. Has an effective date of July 1st of 2023 to June 30th of 2024. This would be for electronic pull tab devices, paddle wheels with tickets, raffles, pull tab dispensing devices, and 21. The third one would be at the Spur Bar, located at 1306 West Valard, effective date of July 1st of 2023 to June 30th of 2024. This would be for electronic pull tab devices, sports pools, pull tab jar, pull tab dispensing devices, and 21. The fourth one would be at Neighbor's Bar, located at 745 State Avenue, effective date of July 1st of 2023 to June 30th of 2024. This would be for electronic pull tab devices, sports pools, Calcutta's, pull tab jar, pull tab dispensing device, and 21. The fifth one would be at Army's West Sports Bar, located at 640 12th Street West, effective date of July 1st of 2023 to June 30th of 2024. This would be for electronic pull tab devices, sports pools, Calcutta's, pull tab jar, paddle wheel table, 21 bingo, and raffles. And the last one for Dickinson Youth Activities would be located at Maverick's Saloon, located at 196 Museum Drive, effective date of July 1st of 2023 to June 30th of 2024. This would be for electronic pull tab devices, pull tab dispensing device, pull tab jar, 21, and sports pool. As I had stated, city staff has reviewed those requests for Dickinson Youth Activities and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. All right, any questions on the gaming sites for Dickinson Youth Activities Incorporated? There are six locations. There are no questions on these gaming sites, and the approval of their license for those. I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion on the Dickinson Youth sites? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Otterman?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next one up is the Matthew Brew Post Three.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a gaming site authorization from the American Legion Matthew Brew Post Three. This would be located at Sanford's Grubbin Pub. Address is 167-14th Street West. This would also have an effective date of July 1st of 2023 to June 30th of 2024. This would be for electronic pull tab devices and pull tab dispensing devices.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the American Legion Matthew Brew Post Number Three site? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And our last site will be the American Foundation for Wildlife.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Gaming site is the American Foundation for Wildlife at the South Side Saloon. Address is 48 East Broadway. Effective date of July 1st of 2023 to June 30th of 2024. This would be for electronic pull tab devices, pull tab dispensing device, pull tab jar, and 21. City staff has reviewed and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the American Foundation for Wildlife site?
I do. Is this a new charity or existing? So who are the beneficiaries of that fundraising?
I think Rita sent us a breakdown.
I looked for it, and I couldn't find it attached to the email, so, okay, okay. Okay, that answers my question.
They do donate locally.
Okay, I just missed the email. Oh, yeah.
The donation list we got was over 90% Dickinson, 95 probably even.
All right, any other questions or comments? Look for a motion?
I'd move, go ahead, Jason.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick, second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Otterman?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have our monthly financial report, and this will be handled by Finance Supervisor Maury. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. So, starting off with our report at the end of April, the first thing, or really the main thing I want to highlight on our Treasuries Report, on the very bottom there, you can see our current interest rate. We actually just got that increased as of May 4th due to the federal increases. So, as of our May report, that'll go up to 2.8%, but for this report here, they'll stay at 2.55. And then, as far as our investments go, with our typical monthly distributions and our interest earned, we saw an increase of less than 1%, so we're still right around 35 million for our total investments. And then, our sales tax and our 1% sales tax, the green line is 23, red line 2022, and the blue line 2021. So you can see the green line in 23 is pretty significantly higher compared to the prior years. April of 23 is about 131,000 higher compared to April of '22, so about a 31% increase there. This next slide here is just as a reminder to the public to show that we have our sales tax in two separate funds, and then taking those amounts together in this third slide here for our total sales tax comparison. In the first four months, we received about 3.7 million with our 1.5% sales tax. That's about 710,000 higher compared to the first four months of 2022, so that's about a 23% increase there. In our hospitality tax, again, with the green line being 2023, you can see just a little bit higher compared to prior years. We're up about 7,700 compared to April of '22, so about an 11% increase there. In our yearly comparison in hospitality tax for the first four months, we've collected 315,000. That's about a $23,000 increase compared to the first four months of '22, about 7%. And you can see that's the highest collection that we've had also in the last seven years for the first four months. In our occupancy tax, also coming in a little higher than the previous two years for April, April of '23 is about 2,600 higher compared to April of '22. That's about a 14% increase. And then, our comparison to prior year for the first four months, it's the second highest collection we've had. Only 2019 was higher. We're about 8,800 higher compared to the first four months of '22, so about 11% increase there. And then, oil impact, we're almost identical to where we were in the prior year. The green line, so we're at, we're down about 59,000 compared to where we were in April of '22, so about a 4% decrease there. And then, for the first four months total, we are down 35,000 compared to the first four months of 2022, less than a 1% decrease compared to last year. With our benchmark being 33% for the first four months of the year, general fund revenue, we're at 22%. Have some more transfers that'll come in that'll increase that number. And then, our general fund expenses, we're at 30%, so we are still under budget from where we'd expect to be at this point in the year. And then, the final slide here, our utility revenue at, again, looking at 33% is our benchmark, 27% collected in our utility revenue, and enterprise fund expenses are at 19% through four months. So with that, city staff recommends approval, and I'll do my best to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Any questions on the financial report? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into, well, we got about three minutes before the 5 o'clock, but we'll go ahead and go with this first one. Mrs. Dominik.
Thank you, President Decker. Commissioners, I have some job descriptions for your review today. If I can get it to you. First up is the Street Maintenance Operator Two. This position was approved with the 2023 budget. It is an achievable position to go from an Operator One to an Operator Two. We are requiring for education and experience, a high school diploma, a GED, three years experience in a Public Works operator position. And then, you see all the special requirements, very similar to all the other Operator Twos that we have had approved so far. Class B, commercial driver's license, the Road Scholar Two, you know, of course, the specialized equipment within the department, APWA Winter Maintenance Supervisor training, the NIMS, the CPR, defensive driving. This position does fall into Grade 13 and is non-exempt. And again, here are the achievable components listed out, the same as the job description. It does also require that the supervisor, the manager, and the Public Works Director recommend this reclassification go through before it does take place. The next position is the Street Maintenance Foreman. Again, this position was budgeted with the 2023 budget and approved for the reorganization changes in the Public Works Department. This is a title change from Senior Street Maintenance Operator to Street Maintenance Foreman, and also a change in the grade from a Grade 13 to a Grade 14. And then, last in the Street Department is the Street Maintenance Supervisor, 2023 budget approved, the reorganizational change for Public Works, and this is just a grade change from a 15 to a 16. The Mechanic Two, very similar to the Operator Two, we're requiring a high school diploma, GED, two years technical certificate degree in heavy equipment and component system repair. We're asking for three years in the department as a Public Works Mechanic or a Public Works Operator, and then the specialized training listed on the classification request form. You can see all the specialized certifications and requirements they're looking for, ASE certification, Clean Air Act Section 609 certification, and then the typical forklift, the fuel- ASE certification, Clean Air Act, Section six oh nine certification, and then, the typical forklift, the Fuel Island certification, CPR, defensive driving, the NIMS trainings, those sort of things. And this one falls in grade fifteen and is a non-exempt position. Again, all the achievable components are listed out here, same as the job description, and does require the supervisor, the manager, and the public works director recommendation for that. City staff is recommending approval for all those positions, and I will take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions on the street? Job descriptions, either street maintenance operator two, street operator foreman, or street maintenance supervisor?
Mr. President, I do have a question.
Mr. Oderman.
So, Mrs. Nomenek, so, high school diploma or general equivalency degree required. Let's say we have a hypothetical candidate that checks all the other boxes, they're fifty years old, they've been in the workforce for quite some time. They don't have that high school diploma or GED, like, what do we do in that situation?
So, we've had this discussion a lot. At this time, public works director is, you know, he really feels strongly about requiring that GED. So, we have kept it at that requirement at this time.
Are we maybe missing out on some good potential candidates as a result of that? I mean, if I've got somebody that's got their CDL and they've got the skill set required, I guess I'm not too concerned if they can do algebra.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's arguments both ways, I can say that, because we have had some very good operators in the past that did not have a high school diploma, worked for us for many years. We have had some difficulties also, where we've had some people who did not have a high school diploma or a GED, and it was difficult for them to pass some of the trainings and the certifications and things that we have. So, I agree, there could be an argument both ways. You know, if it's something that commission feels strongly about and would like to see us change, we're definitely open to that.
I don't know if I feel strongly about it, I just, I think we need to have like a justification for things like that, and, I mean, it sounds like you guys have talked about this at length, so.
We have, yes.
Well, my feeling on that, Commissioner Oderman, is if somehow we have a plethora of non-GEDs or non-high school people applying, and for some reason, because we have that criteria and we can't hire them, then we should address that. HR and Mrs. Zurov should come to us and say, listen, we got three, four people that are interested, and we can make the change at the time. We can call a special meeting if needed, if that would be the case.
Yeah, and that wouldn't change their pay grade, so it wouldn't really even need to be something we'd have to get your approval for, for just updating a job description, but definitely something we'll keep an eye on and watch for.
I think that's something they could track for us and then present it to us, if that would be the case, if all said, we're running into that. So, we could.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the street positions? If not, I would, I guess I would seek a motion on all three positions for street.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman, all three street positions.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Dr. Bear. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chairwood's eye. We're gonna jump into the five o'clock timetable right now, Mrs. Nomenek.
One more thing, you kind of specified street, but there was also a mechanic, are we just lumping that into street?
I guess we can, I did miss the mechanic one, so why don't we go ahead and we'll just do a motion quick on mechanic.
I'd move to approve mechanic two.
Okay, mechanic two. So, we have Commissioner Oderman, Commissioner Sobeluk on the mechanic two position. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Chairwood's eye. We'll get to your report after the timetable, Mrs. Nomenek. Timetable this evening, we have Chapter Four Amendment, and this will be presented by City Administrator Dossinger and Attorney Winkle.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the commission. As we approached the finish line with our Legacy Square project, and eagerly excited to get moving with the programming over there. Obviously, there is a desire to have alcoholic beverages at Legacy Square. In order to do so, there has to be changes made to Chapter Four. We did meet with the Class A liquor license holders on Monday, May eighth, and we also met with the commissioners at a recent work session and took comments back from both those meetings and moving forward and bringing forward in ordinance amendments to Chapter Four from those discussions. So, we would be creating a separate license, it would be a Legacy Square concession license. The license would be bid annually. It'd be bid annually through a bidding process. This year, we are behind, but we are anticipating that every year, this license would be bid right around October when we renew the other alcohol liquor licenses. This would be restricted to on-off sale, Class A, and lodge and club licenses in order to bid on this license. Only these licensees would be able to apply for and bid on the license, and these licenses would not be transferable. This license would apply to only city-sponsored and sanctioned events. If there be other private events at the Legacy Square, such as a wedding or an anniversary, that group would be responsible for going out and seeking a special event permit. Beverages to be sold would include liquor, wine, and beer in cans. We would prohibit the sales of bottles to help with debris and broken glass and for other safety reasons. The security requirements would fall back on the license holder that would have the bid. They'd be responsible, all security personnel, for all events occurring under that license. The designated corridor would be basically from the west side of City Hall and Town Square, and the north side of Town Square, where Rivera Bank is located. The licensee would only be allowed to sell alcohol within that designated corridor. There was some recommendations from our work session as far as removing designated area restrictions for liquor consumption. This would fall in accordance with some changes that were made during the Sixty-seventh Legislative Assembly back in January of two thousand and twenty-one. This would mirror North Dakota Centric Code, where the code change would allow alcohol to be consumed anywhere during a special event. This would apply to the Legacy Square. This would also apply to any special event permit that we would have moving forward within our community. Here is a map of what that corridor would look like, basically, the Second Street and First Avenue West corridor leading to First Street. There were some discussions, it's something that we will take a look at, as far as closing First Street from Sims to First Avenue for pedestrian concerns and traffic concerns, and we will certainly take a look at that. But the designated alcohol consumption corridor would consist of First Avenue West and Second Street at those locations. One thing we looked at as far as how we'd offset some of the cost of Legacy Square as far as future programming and some of the general maintenance, there would be an annual license fee through the bidding process. The city would receive a percentage of the gross alcohol sales. We are proposing twenty percent. And wristbands for patrons who consume alcohol would be, we're proposing five dollars a wristband. This would remain a free event to the public, but if you are gonna be consuming alcohol, you would have to purchase a five dollar wristband. So, I went through that kind of fast. Have any questions that I or Attorney Winkle could answer? We would certainly like to do that for you.
I wasn't privy to the discussion yesterday because I was returning from travel, and I guess, was there any talk about possibly allowing restaurants? If they, say, a Players or Blue Forty-two or whomever, Fat Fish, wanted to be part of this? If they thought their staffing could handle, you know, running these events, would we allow them? Or was it just decided to go strictly, you know, the?
No, we did talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah. And initially, I think that was something that we had placed on the table, but then, we had shifted towards the clubs, basically, I think, on the security concerns, is being able to staff the security and having experience with special use permits and these types of events elsewhere in the community.
My second question would be, I understand we're trying to recoup some of these costs by charging twenty percent, and who's gonna be doing the accounting? Are we gonna have somebody from the city counting?
I have some experience with the event center and how to handle those things, but it will have to be cooperative with Joel and stuff to look at those receipts and everything, the grocery receipts and everything, so.
I've been at these events, there's not a whole lot of, like, ringing up in the till.
No. No, most of your things are.
Wouldn't we be better off just saying we expect a flat fee per event, i.e. maybe a thousand dollars, rather than trying to track somebody down and get their receipts or?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's difficult, obviously, the first year, we're learning a lot. We're gonna learn a lot from this first year.
And then, to me, the bidder then has, okay, I'm gonna bid this, there's ten events down there, they know the set cost, okay? This is gonna cost me, if we charge a thousand dollars a vent, we want a thousand dollars, it's gonna cost me ten thousand dollars to do this, you know?
I mean, that would potentially impact the bid on their bid for the license two, so I see where you're coming from.
Right, I mean, I just find it's gonna be very hard to account for a large event. Let's say, when Tiger Lily's there and you're expecting, you know, four thousand people down there, and how are we gonna track, you know, alcohol sales?
Well, those restaurants, or those liquor places are gonna have to know how much they brought in and how much they took back out, whoever is bidding it.
Brings the cooler trucks and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, somebody's gonna have to know, because they're gonna have to pay the distributor for those products.
And sales tax and all that, I get that, but.
Mr. Dossinger, they did this in the past for first on first, correct?
That has managed to stand incorrect.
There was, they got a share of the gross alcohol sales.
Correct.
The first on first committee to help pay for the bands and stuff. That's your understanding anyways?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then, would the whole five dollars per band come back to the city, or is that a shared two in the proposal?
That would come back to the city.
Because in the past, that band was solely the, was whoever provided the event. I don't think the city got.
What was the rock they usually?
Did the banding, right?
Well, they did have, they did all the alcohol.
And so, did the downtown district get a percentage of the bands or all of it?
I thought the bands were all, went towards the, not the bar or the other place, the one that booked the bands, the group that booked the band.
The promoter.
The promoter got all the five dollars, is what I thought I had heard, but, and I think they, I mean, they had a different split, but.
Essentially, we're the promoter here.
And that was suggested by the liquor license holders, right, the wristbands?
Yes, that is correct.
That was a recommendation that we got from them, so.
And I think that's a great way to do it, you know, do out the bands.
Check your ID.
Yeah, check the ID, give the bands out. I'm just wondering, you know, split-wise, if we were getting the full five dollars, and then, again, my question would be on the gross sales. Are we better served just saying we're gonna do X amount of dollars, a set fee? We know what we're gonna get. Then, somebody can put that in their bid.
I think it's, you know, Mr. Mayor, I think it's difficult, because what event's gonna bring in more? What's gonna be the expectation per event as far as what fee per event? Weather could play certainly a variable in that. Obviously, this first year, we'll probably learn a lot, change a lot for next year, and moving forward, we're trying to get something on the table for this first year. If you would like, you know, we've talked about everything from just one straight minimum bid, or a bid process, hoping to grab, we've come up with a lot of different variables, and we talked this out, but we're looking for options.
Okay.
And I mean, are we just setting a minimum bid?
We certainly could.
Do you have one in mind? Commissioner Frederick? Not really, I'm just, I mean, what if somebody comes in, we have one bidder and they bid a hundred dollars?
Well, certainly, as a commission, you have the ability to reject the recommended bid amount.
I mean, is minimum, I don't know, five hundred or a thousand? I don't know.
And that would be for the annual license you're talking, the?
Yeah. I mean, you're only talking, what, eight or ten events?
I think it's in here.
I believe it was right around eight, I believe, I'd have to look here.
And I think one of the events, they may not even, oh.
That is correct, there's one event, there was no alcohol to be served at the Christian one.
What does a special use permit cost if, you know, somebody's gonna host a party and get a special use permit? Oh, okay, so that's.
And then, I did have a question on the alcohol consumption corridor. That's a little bit larger than I had understood. Like, my understanding was that the corridor was gonna be like basically half of that First Avenue area that is on the map here, but you're saying First Avenue and Second Street, that whole corridor would be alcohol consumption area?
That is correct. We are looking for basically the intersection of First Street and First Avenue West, and then going to the north to the intersection of First Avenue and Second Street, and then, basically, on Second Street, it would go from that intersection to the east to that alley.
So, I mean, yeah, just if you're on the street, you can consume alcohol on the street.
In that area.
Yeah, good.
And I think it's wise, I mean, just my personal comment, I think it's wise just to go with the cans, I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we had discussed that yesterday too, yeah.
I've been at some events where they actually, they hand you a can and there's like a solo cup, and they pop the top and pour it in the solo cup and then hand you the cup, so, right there. And they just keep the can right away, so there's not, no litter. The only litter really is just the solo cup out there, so, but I could see that as being problematic too in a larger area, so.
I guess we can see how year one goes and have not a minimum bid, but. I guess it all depends on how many bidders we get. Well, and after year one, it might be seen as more lucrative, and you get more bids the next year, and it's more competitive, and that drives the bid up, so, I mean. I mean, I think there's just so many unanswered questions right now on what this is gonna look like, that we are gonna have to keep an eye on it and just adjust as is. If I had to pick a number, I would say like a thousand dollars would be the minimum bid, but. And then, the security requirement, who sets those parameters? I mean, is it gonna be the same for every event? Is it gonna be, do they have to be licensed security guards, or can they use non-licensed security?
Commissioner Frederick, we did have that discussion with the Class A liquor license holders. Chief Siani did have a discussion with them. We have been, you know, really easy to work with in the last couple of years, because it is very difficult to hire security companies to come into our community. So, as far as what we consider bona fide security, we have really loosened those requirements over the years, so to speak, and that would still be applied to this. So, obviously, whoever would get the bid would work with our police department and looking at how the layout would be and the expectations in advance. As far as a city, obviously, we would still do what we normally would do in the past with the first on first events, we would have our law enforcement, our bike patrol teams in the downtown area, so that would not change.
And there was some discussion yesterday about how there are some acts that require additional security and things like that too, correct?
I don't know about acts, but it'd be based on what's your expectation as far as privacy.
That was a question, actually, I had. I was kinda under the understanding that certain bands require so many security people here, so I was wondering, who would be responsible for that? Would it be whoever with the alcohol license, or would the police department follow in on that one? Or, because I was told some bands require four, some bands may require up to twelve people here, so who would be responsible for that?
I think that would be a separate rider on that security opposed from what the alcohol has to provide. I think that would be a separate rider on that security opposed from what the alcohol has to provide, um.
Mr. President.
If you have a larger act, they might ask in their rider that they have X amount amenities and they have security details and that's something we have to provide then as a city or a range opposed to whoever's doing the alcohol, cause they're basically, the alcohol is just policing themselves, making sure that that provider of the alcohol is is taking care of their end of the the deal. Us as a city have to take care of our end of the deal with the act that we signed. So, if they have a separate rider for that, then that'll fall upon us, I guess, so.
Mr. President Commissioners, I reviewed all of those contracts for Mr. Walters and there was only one uh, contract that did provide that we as the city provided security, and I did request to have that restricted and removed from the contract, so I don't know if that did in fact get removed, but there was only one and that was, I think, Tiger Lily, uh, with obviously being a bigger act, uh, but the rest of them did not require it contractually.
Okay.
Yeah, you might run into that with some bigger national acts.
Right. And we can, are there any more uh, questions from the commission? If not, this is a public hearing, anyone from the public wishes to come forward, looks like Mr. Marsh is has either some comments or some questions, so.
Hi, Commissioner Maxon Marsh, um, so, on the security for the bar that bids it or the liquor license holder that bids it, um, would it be our job to make sure that everyone that's drinking is twenty-one, not crowd control or any of that? If a fight happens, that should not fall on the bar's security, cause that fight, you can't say happened because of alcohol. If there's a rock concert and kids start moshing, that's not the liquor license holder to go police that.
Yeah, I I I mean, I think our primary could, my primary concern, I can't speak for us, the commission, but would be to make sure that those who are consuming alcohol are twenty-one or or older.
I'm saying that would be, that would be the bar's security.
Yeah, that's.
And that's all they would be for, correct?
Yeah.
And plus, like Mr. Dossinger said, we're gonna have our our patrols on, as we, in the past.
Like you said, they are, been more than easier to work with with how it is to get security these days.
Yeah, yeah, and I I think in the in the past, they both entities have worked really well with each other. Um, if, I I think in the past, it's been like Alpha Six or somebody down there, and if they can't handle it, they reach out to the the police department immediately and they, um, if there's some belligerent individuals that are, you know, becoming a problem.
So that wouldn't be on the bidders?
I I mean, I personally don't think it should be, I think it should be more, the security should be controlling their, the the alcohol, you know, but. I guess, Mr. Dossinger.
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Marsh, obviously would be no change when the first on first events, obviously, security guards have no arrest powers. You know, and oftentimes, we just want them to get hold of law enforcement so we can deal with the situation. That would not change, obviously, if you see a, you know, if there's somebody that's being, you know, heavily intoxicated or whatever, that security guard could ask him to leave. But certainly, if there's an issue such as a a fight or a major incident, we expect you to call law enforcement.
Just eyes, basically, is.
Correct.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? I mean, a lot of, a lot of this is going to be, this is first year, feeling it out and and figuring out what we need. I guess we'll see what the bids come in, if if people think that, you know, with the alcohol sales twenty percent is is too much, too little, um. Generally, at events like this, the, um, they they, the volume seems to be pretty heavy depending on who the act is, so. And I think we have some good acts this year, I mean, there's people excited for, you know, for different reasons, depending on what act's coming on what night, so. Any other, anyone else from the public, comments, questions, you can call in? Seven oh one, four five six, seven zero zero six, if you have any comments, if you're watching online, you can call in. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public have any comments on the Chapter Four Amendment? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, commissioners, are there any additional questions or comments on this?
Mr. President, I just have one comment, um, if the if the commission does decide to move forward with this procedurally, um, I would recommend that the next commission meeting, uh, we have the second reading, uh, that if you choose to decide to sub- submit or recommend a minimum bid, that we make that decision at the next meeting, because we're gonna have to immediately go into the bid process. And then also to, um, as we get the get the square open, there's probably gonna be a need to have a discussion about facility fees and rentals and things of that nature, cause that's gonna come very quickly as well, so I anticipate that that conversation will need to be had sooner rather than later.
Okay. Any additional comments from staff or city commission?
Mr. President.
Ms. Roderman?
I've moved to approve first reading.
We have a motion to approve first reading of the Chapter Four Amendment.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Roderman?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Soblock?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move right into public comments, not on the agenda, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward, discuss any items that are not on the agenda this evening, make the commission aware of any um, concerns or has any questions, please come forward, again, if you're watching online, seven oh one, four five six, seven zero zero six. Does anyone have any comments on items not on the agenda? Any comments? Seeing no one has any concerns or comments on items not on our agenda this evening, we'll close that section of the agenda. And we'll move back into HR, and I think you have a monthly report for us, Mrs. Dominick.
Thank you again, President Decker, commissioners. First on my hiring journal is the library. We have a library assistant, that's a full-time position, we did promote someone from one of our limited hour positions, Katie Hermanson, and she has started that new position. We have a librarian, the marketing and outreach services position open. Limited hour, the library page position, we have two of them open right now. Our planner for engineering community development department, that position has been filled, Matthew will start on June fifth, we're anxious for him to be here. Code enforcement officer, we are, we have that position open in the interview stage right now. Administrative assistant for the engineering community development department, we did make a hire there, Nicole starts tomorrow, actually. So we're excited for her to join us. And the building inspector two position, um, that position, we just had open and did interview on that. Communication specialist, we did make a hire, Hannah, um, will start in a few days here for a communication specialist. We made two hires for police officer and we continue to have that position open. Have four openings currently for police officer, we have the latter lateral police officer position that is open until filled. And if we get an applicant, we will interview at that time. The part-time firefighter positions, we have five open. Solid waste operator, we have three open positions, that again is one of those positions we'll have open until filled, as we get applicants, we do interviews. Scale service representative, we did hire that, she started on the twenty-fourth, we hired Carrie. Street maintenance operator, we have six positions open in the street department. We did do an off, an interview today, um, so hopefully, um, something will come of that one. Facility operator, we did hire Matthew Stewart, he started in mid-Mart or April. So no openings in facility department. Fleet shop technician, we did make a hire there, um, Carlos will start or did start May ninth. Mechanic, we had an interview for that position, or we're in the interview stage, I should say, so, um, we'll see how that goes. Seasonal marketing and events assistant, we did fill that, Michaela has started and and Joel is very happy with her assistance right now. Street laborer, we're looking at now our seasonal positions, it's a seasonal street laborer. We did hire one person for street, we have three left to fill. As far as the other ones, we had four openings in water utility, utility laborers, we filled all of those. Labor for forestry, we had three openings, those have all been filled. We had twelve openings for buildings and grounds, all of those have been filled. We had a seasonal paleontology assistant and that one has been filled. And museum workers, three openings for the museum and all museum positions have been filled. So right now for seasonal is just the street department that we'll continue to search for applicants. And I would take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Dominick, any questions for Mrs. Dominick or staff on the HR report?
Just uh, code enforcement, we didn't get very many interviews in the second round, or applications.
We did not, we had um, two applicants and one withdrew. So, one interview.
Mrs. Dominick, um, I seem to recall, and my recollection might be faulty here, but like, um, on the seasonal forestry and building and grounds positions, didn't we have a little bit of trouble filling those last year?
We did, and um, I honestly, I think I'll give some credit to Lee Skabel, I think he really went out there and did some recruiting and worked with the um, college, the university to try to get some um, some of their students in and he did a really great job, he filled them all very quickly.
Yeah, it's really, I mean, that's, it's night and day from last year, so that's really great to see.
Yes, and perfect timing, the grass is growing and ready to be mowed and we got him hired.
So what kind of feedback are we getting on on these positions, like the mechanic, I see we got one application there too, I mean, is it money, is it hours, I mean, there's gotta be some feedback, we're not getting anybody to apply for these jobs.
Yeah, the last one that we interviewed, we had made an offer for mechanic, um, he did mention money. He had looked at all the mechanic positions within the state, he did talk about, you know, that we need to increase our salary. We tried to get him to come in and take a look at our facility, we have some things to offer that other places probably don't. With our hours, we have four tens, we have, you know, a lot of holidays, we have great vacation, sick leave, you know, our benefits, health insurance, those sort of things, it was enticing to him, um, but not enough to get him to to move here and and be interested.
Any other questions for Mrs. Dominick? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move into our finance committee reports, and this will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, I am bringing forward um, a request, uh, letting them know that the public to know here and online is that we do have a citizen interest form out there looking for two people to apply for our finance committee. And so I'm just gonna give a brief um, purpose of what our committee is set up with. The committee is made up of two commissioners, the city administrator, the deputy city administrator, city attorney and the finance supervisor, and so we're looking for two members outside, uh, filling out the citizen interest form. And the purpose of the committee shall assist the Board of City Commissioners in fulfilling its responsibilities with respect to oversight of the city's financial management and resources, and to help focus on expected outcomes and potential strategies for overcoming setbacks or changes in the financial environment. The committee shall also evaluate specific financial strategic initiatives and policies as requested by the board. So with that, um, I just wanted to give a short summary of what the finance committee is and we're looking for two citizens that would like to be on that and they would go to the website and fill out the citizen interest form and check mark and then it will go right to um, Ms. Binstock, um, and then she will forward them to our committee. That's what my report was on that.
Okay, and then we also have the uh, the bylaws that are in there, if someone's interested, they can also.
Yes.
Get that was from Mrs. Binstock, so.
Yep, exactly.
Any questions on the finance committee uh, report? And I would encourage everyone watching and anyone in the audience or the commission, if you know somebody that um, wants to be involved to make sure they get this filled out and get on. Sometimes these committees, they just, they go unfilled and then all of a sudden, people are wondering, why, you know, why weren't they they told and and we do try to be very public about these openings, so. Okay, and then you have a senior citizen grant report?
Correct, um, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, uh, just like to report, um, like we do every year, um, our twenty twenty-three grant um, program for the senior citizen. And I'm just going to list um, the applicants and the amount that we uh, set aside for them. Um, through this process, it's through the budget process that the one percent sales tax, a portion of the one percent sales tax is set aside and approved of fifty thousand dollars for the senior center grant programs and stuff, and this hits our eight counties, it's a regional type. So Prairie Senior Citizen Club of Amadon, it was awarded two thousand. Senior Citizens Activity Club of Balefield was awarded four thousand. Sod Busters Club Incorporated out of Bowman, seven hundred. Sunset Senior Citizen out of Dickinson is five thousand. Dodge Senior Citizens, um, twenty-five hundred. Brick City Senior Citizens out of Hebron is five thousand. Second Forty Club Senior Citizens out of Hedinger is six thousand five hundred. Little Missouri Senior Center Marmouth is uh, one thousand five hundred. Cannonball Senior out of Mott is three thousand. New England Senior Citizens is five thousand. Prairie Pioneers out of Reader is three thousand. Rame Pioneer Senior Citizens out of Rame is one thousand. Richardson Senior Citizen is six thousand. Southheart Senior Citizens is nine hundred and Taylor Senior Citizen Center is three thousand. So at this time, it came up to forty-nine thousand one hundred dollars for the applications.
And according to what you provided us, you're waiting on um, their application from Halliday for nine hundred dollars?
Correct.
Okay, that'll take us to the fifty thousand. Okay, any questions on this report from Mrs. Carlson? Okay, we'll move on, we'll go into public works, the first item up. We have an Apex Task Order for Water Reclamation Facility, the SCADA upgrades, and this will be handled by Utility Manager Zastopol, welcome.
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. Um, the task order with Apex Engineering Group is for the Water Reclamation Facility SCADA and software upgrades. Um, the project consists of replacing the existing SCADA hosting computer and upgrading the SCADA software to the latest available version. The product includes evaluation and design of the new hosting computer and assisting, and assistance from the Apex Engineering Group. Um, city public work staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Zastopol, any questions for Mr. Zastopol on this SCADA update? And this is Task Order twenty twenty-three dash one for Water Reclamation Facility SCADA computer and software upgrades.
The task order is for twenty-five thousand five hundred, not to exceed, so, still, you know.
Any questions? Not, I'd look for a motion on this task order.
Mr. President?
Ms. Roderman?
Um, Mr. Zastopol, how often do we have to replace this stuff and upgrade the software and stuff?
So right now, we're at Windows seven, um, the security is high, um, so it's just to upgrade our equipment, so our telemetry panels, um, the actually, the operation of the wastewater treatment plant is all included, that's why we're requesting Apex to help with this, so we can run our plant and do the. That's why we're requesting Apex to help with this, so we can run our plant and do the upgrades.
Okay, thank you. Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Otterman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Zaspul, you have a sewer jetter bid.
I do. And thank you again, President Decker, Commissioners. We received, the Utilities Department received two bids for the 2023 jetter truck. One bid was from ABM Equipment for $349,707 after trade-in, and one bid from Normon Equipment for $325,000 after trade. The unit will be replacing a 2,000 Sterling jetter truck. This is a 2022 budgeted item encumbered for the 2023 equipment purchase of 285,000 on a seven-year lease. The jetter truck from ABM Equipment met all our specifications, and the jetter truck from Normon Equipment didn't meet our specifications. Some of the specifications that are not met by Normon Equipment, it was a lighter chassis. There was a tension bar to help hold the 600 feet of hose in place when jetting a line. Automatic wine guide to help retrieve the 600 feet of line. Different materials for the water tank and the water pump didn't meet our GPM and pressure. Without that, we would have to get all new nozzles and equipment to run it with our other one that we have. It is the recommendation of the Public Works staff to purchase the 2023 jetter truck from ABM Equipment for $349,707. Previously, we had a seven-year lease for 41,000, for 285. The new lease would be for $49,958, an increase of $9,244. The jetter truck we wouldn't receive until the beginning of next year, so it would be start of next year's budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Zaspul. Any questions for Mrs. Zaspul on this bid? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And we have a monthly report from Mr. Prowse.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. Before you, I'm here before you tonight to present the April 2023 monthly report for Public Works. Just a reminder once again of the services that Public Works does provide to our community. We do have one capital project taking place. It's been ongoing since last year. It's our mausoleum addition. Progress for, the progress for that for the month of April, they did get all the granite installed on the roofs. The new metal panels have been installed on the roof as well. The granite fronts have been installed to the crypts along with the niches. And the freestanding columbariums have been installed and are in place. There was some damage to the niche liners on the building's exterior. Those liners have been replaced. They were cracked. Somehow through shipping and installation, they ended up cracking. They did go in and replace those liners, and they are gonna supply us with some additional in case it would happen again in the future. And then all the sheet rock has been installed, textured, taped and textured on the interior of the new building. Some photos of the progress, the far left over there, the crane is hoisting the columbariums into place in between the two mausoleums. On the top right, you can see they're installing the granite to the crypts. And then on the bottom is this kind of a nice overview of where we're at in the completion of the project currently. We are looking at a possible end of June completion date, so we're hoping at the beginning of July, there could be an opening of some sort on the new mausoleum. Some special events that we had in the month of April. I myself got to present at the North Dakota Solid Waste Recycling Spring Workshop. I was talking about our air curtain incinerator. That's getting high recognition throughout the state of North Dakota, and several other communities are following suit. Some other public, special events that we're working on, the Public Works Director, and some employees did work on completing an application for the North Dakota Snow Removal Assistance Program. If it all goes as we plan, through the two grants, we're hoping to get about $300,000 in funds returned back to the city for our snow removal events this past year from October of '22 till April of '23. One thing we do have coming up as an, for an event for Public Works, kind of in conjunction with our Public Works Week, is June 29th. We are using Legacy Square right here beside us from 4:00 to 8:00 to host a Public Works event. Some, we'll have staff on hand presenting different areas of our operations, as well as displaying a lot of our equipment, offering some hot dogs, some bouncy houses, music, and educational booths. Again, that's 4:00 to 8:00 on June 29th for any citizens that want to participate. Some trainings that we did offer in the month of April, thanks to the Fire Department. We did all-employee CPR, first aid, and EAD training. It was a two-day event to cover all of our city, or all of our Public Works employees, and we did open that up to some city employees, other city employees throughout Dickinson. Five individuals from Public Works attended the North Dakota Asphalt Conference. Five of them also attended the North Dakota Solid Waste Recycling Spring Workshop. That was in, both of those were in Bismarck. And two employees did go to the APWA Snow Conference, which was held in Omaha, Nebraska. Our OP Work Service Request for the month of April, we are at 112 requests. It's down slightly from 2022, but it's still an increase from 2021. The 112 contributes to the total of 614 we have year-to-date. Overview of where our service requests are most seen at. There's 27 of them that came through for water, sewer, and stormwater, 22 for street repair, 18 for garbage services, and then you can see the rest. In our Buildings and Grounds Department, the month of April, they built 50 cement pads for the reburials, for marking of the reburials from last summer, along with leveled the grass, seeded the areas, and hoping to catch some of that nice spring rain on top of them and get the growth to come. Our Buildings and Grounds Department just want to highlight their plans for this summer. Shelley kind of stole some of my PowerPoint. We are fully staffed. The one department in Public Works that's fully staffed. Our seasonals will be funneling in here over the next two weeks. With that being said, we did come up with a plan for operations this year. We are planning to put three to four individuals full-time into the cemeteries. Their primary job is to mow and weed every cemetery and just keep rotating through the summer. So we're hoping to hit every cemetery on a weekly basis. There'll be a crew on all the right-ofways boulevards and city properties, again, doing the mowing and weed eating. We do have a crew built this year for noxious weed and vector control. And then our third, our fourth crew, there will be a few individuals assisting Joel and Blake in forestry on the downtown beautification process and at Legacy Square. So with that department being fully staffed, we're able to move people around. We did do a little trial basis earlier this week, and within a little better than a day, we pretty much went through all of the right-ofways where we mowed them and cleaned them up. So it doesn't look it. Obviously, with the rain and the sun, we have some grass growing really quickly right now.
I, I, I don't think it can be overstated how I think great and important that's gonna be for the community.
Yes.
Just from the standpoint of making it look clean and presentable. I just, I'm really excited about how we're fully staffed, and then, like I said, I don't think it can be overstated. So, great job, guys.
Thank you. Moving into our Fleet Department, we had a total, we have a total of 59 work orders for the month of April, which brings our year-to-date at 444 work orders. That is slightly down. We are only half-staffed. When I say half-staffed, we have two of the four employees in the Fleet Department. As Shelley said, we did have a new Lube Tech start, just a couple, actually, I think, just a week ago. So hopefully, we see our work order numbers starting to climb a little bit. Overview of where those work orders are at, 19 of them are in the Solid Waste Department, 10 in the Police Department, nine in Street, eight in Buildings and Grounds getting the equipment ready to go. And you can see the rest. Total of 800, a total of 8,641 gallons of fuel was used for the month of April. 44% of that was clear diesel, 8% was dyed diesel, and 48% was unleaded gasoline. In the Solid Waste Department, we have 4,433 total tons of materials that came in for the month of April, bringing our year-to-date of 14,064 tons. We are running above last year, below 2021 numbers, but fairly consistent overall. As you can see, it's starting to trend in that upward motion of what we normally see year-to-year anyway. Some of the concerns that we have, as I brought up previously or multiple times before, we have our drop site over on West Broadway. In the month of April, we did put the tree boxes over there for use. We've been seeing fairly decent consideration. However, there is still some contamination issues that we're running into. I don't have it on here. It was supposed to be a main report, but I'm gonna report on it tonight. Just today, we have tree boxes on-site, but we had a resident that unloaded a whole load of trees into our grass boxes. So, we're gonna have to do some more marketing. We're gonna have to get that out there. I'm gonna take advantage of it tonight and say, please utilize the boxes for what they're intended for. It helps us, is, of course, because we're not damaging equipment, but then we can also recycle the materials or reuse the materials as needed. So on the far-left picture, that's one of the pictures of our tree boxes. You can see there's a whole trailer load of trees that pulled up to it. As a quick reminder, they're for residential use. Large loads like that should be coming out to the Baylor Building and saving those boxes for the people that have a branch or two or three are doing the small prunings in their yard versus large trailer loads as such, which are gonna fill that box up rather quickly. On the top right, you can see there's a little bit of construction lumber that's in those boxes. We cannot recycle the construction lumber. Construction materials is handled in a whole different way through our operations. Bottom right, those are yard waste boxes, which are intended for grass, leaves, and vegetive materials basically coming out of your gardens. Many bags, branches, brush, all of that will wreck our compost turner. Therefore, that is all contaminated. All three of those units will go into our landfill as contaminated materials and will not get composted. Moving into the water, the utilities department. Utility billing work orders for the month of April, we're at 72, bringing our year-to-date 326. It is a little bit higher than where we've been in the past years. Southwest Water Authority, this is water purchased from Southwest Water Authority. We're at 60.52 million gallons, bringing it to 200 and just about 18 million gallons of water purchased in 2023. We are on an upward trend, and we are ahead of the past two years. Total effluent, this is water that was released, or wastewater that was released, sorry. Month of April, there were 82 million gallons of wastewater released. 91% of that went to the Hart River, and 9% was water that was sold. Our Street Department has been very busy, considering they are also under half-staff. Right after we got done with all our snow removal, they did go out and start doing pothole repairs, which we got ahead of that, and we were able to get into our chip seal area. They have finished craxing the whole entire chip seal area. They're now looking, working on other areas with DuraPatch and moving along with that. We do have our sweepers out. Big concern that we get brought up, that gets brought up pretty frequently at this time of the year, is the dust. We are using water, however, the buildup in the curb and gutters is thicker than the water will absorb. So it looks like we're not using water, but there is water coming out of the sweepers. It's just not penetrating through all of the buildup, and therefore, the top is wet, but the bottom is all actually dry material. That's what's causing the dust clouds. But we are using water on our street repairs, or street sweepings. Last slide I have here, we did welcome two new full-time staff members. Matthew Stewart started with our Buildings and Grounds Department. He filled our final full-time position on April 17th. And Kerry Delang was welcomed into the Solid Waste Department as a Scale Service Representative on April 24th. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Any question for Mr. Prowse on the Public Works monthly report?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Baer.
Mr. Prowse, I got a question regarding, if you go back up to the picture of the bins that you had there. I'm sure you do this.
There you go.
Yeah. Are they, are they, is there a lot of markings there to tell people what is to go where? And is it in very large letters so people can see that?
So on all of the yellow bins that are designed for composting, there are markings on both sides. It's hard to see on this picture, but if you see the white and red markings, it actually tells you what is acceptable in there. And on that placard, if you want to say, or sign, it does say on the very bottom, no tree branches. On the two top bins that we did put out for trees, we just did some quick stickers on there, labeling them for trees. Those are temporary boxes at this point. We're gonna be building some new boxes for this location at some point, but we just utilized some boxes we had in our yard, so we just did a quick fix on them and labeled them for trees only.
Do we need to put some kind of post, signs on posts that says compost only, trees only? I mean, in huge letter. I, I mean, I would imagine the people who are doing this are just driving up and tossing.
So as you enter the site, we do have signage, as you're entering into the site, of what's acceptable on that location. Those boxes do move. As we're swapping them in and out, we do slide them around a little bit, so posts could potentially get in the way. I'd hate for them to get knocked over constantly, but they do move. We could look at doing a little bit better signage, maybe on our tree boxes. As I said, those are temporary boxes that we have there right now, until we get some new ones built. But we could look at definitely getting some better signage for the trees. The problem I have is the yardways boxes, the signage, I want to say it's a 2x3, roughly in diameter. 2x2, 2x3. It's fairly visible when you're standing there and unloading the bags into it.
Okay, I mean, you can, you can see it on the, on the picture here, on the camera.
Yeah.
You zoom in, I mean, I would imagine if you pulled right up to it, it should be fairly visible.
Yeah, it's, they're fairly visible signs.
I know. People get there and they just, they just throw. They're not reading. They just throw. They see a dumpster, they just throw.
A lot of times, it turns into a free-for-all. I don't have it on here, but last year, we ran into an issue, hence why we ended up locking some of the enclosed bins, but they were opening up our cardboard and paper recycling bins and stuffing them full of styrofoam and furniture and everything else that you can imagine. So we ended up putting padlocks on the back of them, so nobody could access them.
The other question I have for you, could I get this asked multiple times? When is, is there any plans to put a station up north? I know we used to have one on 15th Street next to the lift station. Then there was talk maybe about, oh, back in the, the, the fall, about maybe everybody's CHI. People were asking me, when is that gonna come, and is it still in the, still in the works?
So to answer that question, I would like to say definitely, we will look at alternate sites. Our big struggle right now is we also are running short on staff. I have four openings in that department. To run to Broadway and back to the landfill is a 45-minute trip each time. So it's eating up a lot of time. In the winter months, I run one roll-off truck in town. In the summer months, we run three, five days a week. Include, and then also Saturdays and Sundays, we have trucks running, one to two trucks. To add additional sites, obviously, is gonna take more manpower, but it's also gonna take more equipment. Uh, the CHS, or CHI hospital location is more than likely a no-go. Um, Mr. Odomin's sitting right beside, and as far as looking up north, we did look at a couple different locations, um, but with the shortage of staffing, it is definitely hard to continue to add additional duties onto my operators, um, when we're, we're actually looking at what we're gonna start trimming if we don't start filling positions. So, one of the things that we're already are playing around with is our Baylor operation, um, for the summer months, just so I can allocate those staff in other areas as employees are wanting and do deserve their vacation time, um, because they're putting in all the hours that they've been putting in, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Prowse?
Mr. Prowse, do, I mean, you just spoke to something that I think is really important for us to consider as a commission, and that's the fact that, like, we've got a lot of open positions. Um, and do we have to consider kinda recalibrating how we're, we're viewing those positions in terms of like, uh, compensation model standpoint, or, uh, I mean, is that, is that the main feedback that you're getting, that we're not getting applicants for those positions? Because, um, I, I mean, we can only, we can only kinda kick that kind down the road for so long before we have to start, um, cutting services, or, um, because like, you're, you're right, um, our operators deserve their vacation. We can't just expect them to, to work all the time and, and not get a break, because then we're gonna be burning people out, and we're gonna be down even more and have even more open positions. And so, um, be honest with us, I mean, i- is that something that we need to consider?
Uh, yes, I'll be very honest with you. Um, I know we're going through that study with Lori Graves right now. Um, we did that three years ago, and I, I have high hopes that something positive comes out of it, but a lot of our, I shouldn't say a lot of, almost all of our public works positions require a CDL. We need to make sure that we're competing with the market around us, because there's a limited supply of those CDL applicants out, or, uh, drivers out there, and we're not filling positions. I've visited with some people trying to get them to apply with the city, and when we get to the conversation about what are you paying, I get a chuckle.
So, so like, how far below are we i- in terms of market?
Well, the highest that, our step three is just over twenty dollars an hour, uh, to bring a CDL driver in. Most people that I've talked to, they're anywhere from about that twenty-five to thirty-dollar an hour range. I've heard all the way up to thirty-two dollars an hour, and they're seeing applicants, but they're not seeing an overabundance of them.
It's gonna be.
So it's.
I mean, we're, we're competing with the oil field.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, it's never gonna be possible for us to keep up with the oil field.
I mean, we offer a five-thousand-dollar bonus. You drive up north, the, there's two oil field companies offering a ten-thousand-dollar bonus. So, it's, we, if we go to ten thousand, they go to fifteen. I mean, it just, they have the means, we are limited in our resources, so.
The unique thing, and, and it's not all bad, um, Shelley touched base on this, uh, just briefly, uh, here a bit ago, we do offer a really good benefit package. Um, most of our public works department is working four-ten-hour shifts. We're playing with, or toying with the idea on the solid waste side of trying to move some positions to four-ten-hour shifts. Um, it's gonna take some time to work through that, because there's a lot of moving parts, especially in the solid waste department, but our water utilities, street, and Buildings and Grounds departments are all running four-tens, which is a kind of a nice perk. Yeah, you work four days, you got three off, um, situation. So, we do offer some nice perks, some benefits on our side, but the pay is definitely the one that is gonna need some attention.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Prowse? Thank you. Next up, uh, public safety, we have Lieutenant Hannel presenting the monthly police department report.
Good evening, uh, President Deckard and Commissioners. Uh, Chief Ciani's, uh, out of state at training here, so I will be presenting the, uh, April department in his stead here. Uh, first and foremost, the calls for service for the, uh, the first four months of, uh, twenty-twenty-three compared to twenty-twenty-two. Obviously, a little bit of a, a downtrend, um, I can probably attribute that to, we have a lot of, uh, officers in training right now, so typically when we have an influx of, of officers being trained, uh, those FTOs are usually paired with them, so that's almost an entire officer that's taken more or less out of the rotation to be able to do proactive work, uh, because keep in mind, calls for service are not only the emergency and non-emergency, uh, numbers that are called in from the public, but also self-initiated activities such as traffic stops, PR stops, uh, those sorts of things. So that's likely to, what's attributed to, to, uh, that level right there. Uh, for, uh, traffic control, three hundred and one traffic stops, uh, but an even split of citations and warnings. Uh, speeding typically is, is the, uh, the top one off there. For our crashes, we have fifty-nine total, uh, crashes in the month of April. Uh, one injury, twenty hit-and-run, and, uh, three to eight property crashes. Uh, these numbers are actually down fifty percent from March, uh, which is good, you know, fifty percent in the stock market, not so good, but we'll take fifty percent reduction in crashes. Uh, for our total arrests, uh, for April, uh, vast majority of those are either crimes involving violence or, uh, thefts. Uh, our drug and alcohol-related make up for, uh, about a third, uh, of which the classifications, um, we've seen a, uh, a downward trend slightly of, of over, uh, year-over-year, or month-over-month, I should say, and with the exception of our, uh, Class C felonies, those are, are a little bit more serious offenses. Uh, those were almost double, uh, in the month of, uh, April versus, uh, the prior three. Uh, some notable incidents that we were working on here within the past month, we, um, had the, uh, privilege of busting a pretty large, uh, theft ring that, that appears to be, uh, both statewide and region-wide, uh, with a few individuals that were going to separate liquor stores, buying some high-value liquor, um, ultimately stealing that and then peddling that for, for a pretty big profit at the end of that. We were able to get a license plate off of that and it kinda cracked the case open, and now we're working with our, uh, state and, uh, regional partners to help shore up those cases. Um, in addition, from our criminal investigations, uh, side of it, and in our, uh, dare units for, uh, the grade schools, um, they had our, uh, dare graduation program. Uh, Detective Oki and Detective Winery, uh, conducted that. And also in investigations, our intel analyst has been attending numerous meetings with, um, Detroit Police Department to help facilitate some intelligence sharing from, um, the criminal network that we're experiencing from, from Detroit and other areas, uh, around the nation that, um, have an impact of our areas over here. Um, she also was able to, uh, crack open a, um, a recent spree of vandalisms within Dickinson, it seems to be at least tagging for, uh, Srenio's thirteen gangs out of Southern California, so, uh, either, either some wannabes are up here trying to do that, or, um, it could be a legitimate tag, but she's also in the process of, uh, coordinating with those agencies, uh, down there to identify those people. The, uh, criminal investigation, eleven call-outs, uh, in April. They had, uh, three deaths, uh, two sex crimes, uh, three aggravated assaults. Um, I think, uh, specifically their one, uh, one of those aggravated assaults was a assault with a weapon, uh, so, so pistol whipping. Um, one individual was punched and sustained broken bones, and another was, uh, had a sustained laceration from a knife, so those are some pretty serious offenses that, uh, investigators were working on. Their caseload, uh, is currently stands at eighty-six cases. Uh, fifty-eight were closed in the month of April with no further follow-up. They did have six clearances by arrests, and, uh, currently are sitting at forty-eight open cases at the end of the month. Uh, they, um, vast majority of their cases that they keep open here are background checks, both for initial employees and, and elsewhere. Uh, eleven search warrants, ten agency assists, uh, and digital forensics, uh, examinations, and the rest is listed up there. Behavioral health obviously continues to be, uh, a lion's share of our workload, especially on patrol, patrol responses to, uh, welfare checks and mental health subjects. Uh, fifty-eight welfare checks for the month of April, which, uh, definitely seems pretty commonplace to have several a day. Um, people either from out of state wanting, uh, welfare check done on their relative or friend. Five mental health, uh, calls that patrol dealt with, seven intoxicated subjects, and four suicidal threats. We were busy in the training department in April, um, our communication specialists. Um, we just instituted our senior dispatcher program, uh, very similar to what, uh, you approved, uh, today for the, uh, fleet department, kind of a, a structured matrix for allowing seasoned employees to, to advance their careers a little bit more and get a little bit more pay. Uh, part of that is, uh, having an extra, uh, class of some sort, uh, be it like a fire dispatch specialty or, or tactical dispatching. Um, so one of our senior dispatches was able to attend that class. Uh, our K-nines attended the USPCA certifications for the years and both, uh, passed for the year again. And, uh, our first responder symposium was, was an absolute hit. We had that here at the beginning of April. That was the three-day, uh, symposium that, that we, um, hosted here in Dickinson. I'll get to, I think there's a separate slide coming up here in just a second, so I'll, hold that for just a second. Records staff, forty-seven fingerprinting, twenty-two sex offender, uh, sex offender registrations, uh, forty-nine warrants, uh, processed. We did, um, I know it's probably a May thing, but they just got done doing our annual, uh, sex offender, uh, verification, uh, so ba- basically our, our goal is to make a hundred percent contact with all the registered sex offenders within the city of Dickinson to ensure they're meeting compliance with the registration requirements. I do believe they had, uh, about half a dozen that, um, weren't necessarily passing, so, uh, those are either getting forwarded up to the attorney for review for potential criminal charges, um, and I think they still have a few yet to, uh, make contact with. For our dispatch center, uh, right on par for, uh, both nine-to-one emergency incoming calls, uh, nothing too drastically changed, uh, for that month-to-month. Over at the animal shelter, um, the biggest, uh, work that they have is, is dealing with the running-at-large within the city, uh, followed, uh, by some nuisance complaints, uh, such as barking, uh, animal, animal neglect and, uh, owner surrenders. We still pride ourselves as being able to, uh, foster out or, uh, return to owner, um, almost every animal that comes into our shelter. Uh, currently, the, um, we're, we're sitting, uh, for the month of April, we saw sixty-nine total animals through our shelter. Uh, most of those returned to owner, though. Our school resource officers, uh, issued fourteen, uh, or they responded fourteen calls at the high school with six juvenile summons issued. Over at the middle school, ten calls, uh, mounting to three summons issued, and at the elementary school, they responded to ten calls for service in the month of April. Or is that sixteen? My, my eyes are getting bad. Our, uh, community service officer, Sergeant Stocky, he was, uh, busy doing, uh, the, uh, health and wellness event over at Heart River Elementary last month, uh, also conducted a Boy Scout tour and, uh, can, uh, provide a situational awareness talk, uh, with the folks over at Social Services. And, uh, yeah, getting back to the first responder, uh, symposium that we, uh, had at the beginning of April, this was the, the first, uh, um, of its kind that we've, we've hosted in the area. This is actually kind of a brainchild, uh, of Administrator Dossinger, finally came to fruition. We've been holding on to some money, um, and covering it, uh, from year-over-year to be able to host this, uh, uh, symposium that featured several speakers that are top of the industry that, that we could get. Um, uh, we had, uh, Attorney Eric Daigle that provided, uh, some insight at, at some of the, um, more up-to-date case law regarding use-of-force incidents, uh, a lot of the nuance stuff that's, that's coming up in the, in, in the realm of, of use-of-force. Uh, we also had Katie Coolman, who is a, uh, psychol- first responder psychologist, provided a, a very, uh, co- compelling presentation about the first responder trauma and, and, uh, response to that. And then the last day was, uh, Mr. Cody Gandy from Echelon Front, uh, Echelon Front for any, uh, any military police nerds like, that, that just dig this stuff, um, he's, he's, uh, part of Echelon Front, and that's kind of the premier, uh, training, uh, and leadership, uh, organization out there, and we were able to get, uh, him to come up here to do a, uh, really good presentation the final day. Um, do have to send out special thanks to, uh, our, uh, events and marketing coordinator, Joel Walters. He, uh, helped design all the, uh, the graphics here, all the, uh, putting everything together. It was, it was like an iPhone reveal. The event was just phenomenal. So we, we, uh, we're really proud of, of, of what he was able to do for us and, and, um, really represented Dickinson very well. We hope that this can become an annual event, um, since we're somewhat looked upon as, as a hub city for, you know, a multitude of things as, as a city. Uh, we, we as, at the police department too feel that as well, um, both for, uh, you know, the surrounding agencies, I think they kinda look up to us as, 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 uh, the big brother to, to, to help them through, so hosting events like this where they can get some, um, top-tier training and, on a yearly basis and, and, uh, also get, get them to town and, and just get some, uh, connection with those agencies is, uh, is phenomenal. Uh, Detective Sergeant Travis Lyons was honored with the Dakota Child's Advocacy Center as a Hero of the Month, uh, back in April. Uh, Travis does a phenomenal job, uh, with, with everything, uh, for, for children advocacy, uh, for our department. He's, uh, goes above and beyond for that, so we're really, really proud of him and really happy that, uh, he was recognized for that. The, uh, Fourteenth Annual Daddy Dad, uh, Daddy Daughter Dance was held out at, uh, the August House venue. Uh, it was a three-night event, was since, since the venue is a little bit smaller, we had to spread it out to three days. Uh, three days of baby shark, that was, uh, pretty epic. So, uh, we had a total of nine hundred and thirty-two total attendees. That's always a, that's always a fun event. Also in April, we had several, uh, recognition weeks of sorts, the first of, uh, of which being, uh, Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Um, we have, uh, eleven dispatchers, um, currently fill, uh, filling the spot for a couple more, but, uh, we have a great group of, uh, guys and gals that, that are answering the phone twenty-four-seven out there, so recognizing our dispatchers April ninth to the fifteenth. And then following that was National Animal Control Appreciation Week, so Amanda, Kaya, Terrence, and Audrey do a great job of caring for our, uh, lost furry friends out in the community. And then Administrative Professionals Day, uh, our record staff and our administrative assistant, Becky Darnell, Brandy, and Rachel, they, they, uh, push the paper and, uh, keep everything flowing really well, so we appreciate them. Um, and then the last, uh, slide, I, I wasn't able to sneak it in, and I can probably come back at a later date just to give you an update, but, uh, for the siren project, the radio interoperability, uh, the project that we've been working on for, for the last, uh, several years, seems like, uh, we are officially, both the police and the fire department as of, uh, late last week, uh, online and running on, on the siren system. It's been phenomenal so far. We haven't, uh, experienced really any dead areas, uh, the system's been very stable. Um, so the next step is, uh, getting the ambulance service onboard, uh, here locally. Um, we're gonna be working with, um, Mr. Zeraf and Mr. Prowse, uh, with the, getting the public, well, work staff, uh, switched over hopefully sometime this summer. That's gonna be a Herculean, um, lift on that one, because it's just the sheer, sheer amount of the fleet size for that and the installation, the actual installation of the radios there is gonna probably take a little bit longer. Um, and then, uh, closing it out would probably be the, uh, the Sheriff's Department, uh, for Stark County, that'll be at the end of the year, and then we'll all, uh, at least within Stark County area, uh, be all online, so. And I can, again, probably at a future meeting here, give you a little bit more of a detailed update, but that's, uh, right off the heels of, of this week, so. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Lieutenant Hannel. Uh, any questions for Lieutenant Hannel on the monthly report?
Thank you.
Great job, guys. Moving into community development, we have a KLJ task order for the Dickinson South Cemetery, and this will be handled by Engineering and Community Development Director Skolczek.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. Uh, tonight we have a task order for the Dickinson South Cemetery, uh, from Catamaras Lane Jackson, and, uh, this is for Construction Engineering Services. This is an amendment to their, uh, existing task order for this, uh, for this project. Total task order amendment for Construction Engineering Services, sixty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars, and that's a not-to-exceed amount. Um, it's hard to say exactly what the cost and whatnot will be when we don't have a schedule from the contractor yet, the, the product's out to bid, but, um, project, uh, bid opening date is, I just have this in front of me here, um, next Wednesday, May twenty-fourth. And, um, uh, city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Skolczek. Uh, any questions on task order number twenty-two oh-four-dash-zero-zero-nine-six-two? And this is an agreement between the city and KLJ for professional services. If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Soluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further comments or questions? Any further comments or questions? I think this is a project that a lot of people are looking forward to getting this finished. I know there's still a lot of people reaching out to me, how soon are we going to be selling plots? So it'll be interesting how fast those go, and we have to move into phase two. But again, we have a motion in a second, so if there are no more comments or questions, go ahead and vote. Mrs. Soluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Odoman?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. The next item up, we have a KLJ task order for the Legacy Square Parking Lot. Mr. Skolczek?
Good evening again, Mr. President and Commissioners. For the Legacy Square Parking Lot, again, this is a task order amendment for Catamaras Lee and Jackson, and this is for Construction Engineering Services. Again, this is a not-to-exceed amount of fifty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. As just a kind of a general reminder, the project area, that's the city-owned area in the yellow shading, the former Elks property, that's actually not included within this project. There has been some communications with that, with that property owner, but nothing conclusive at this point. So we did not want to include that within this project. And then the area to the, to the right or to the, the east, the riverbank area. And, and then in the middle with the, with the alleyway, and that is part of this, this project, the alleyway removal and replacement and the approaches on the north and south side, so. And again, that, that project, we actually have a pre-bid conference for both of these projects coming up later on this week, May eighteenth. And then the bid openings will be Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, so city engineering staff recommends approval.
Any questions for city staff or KLJ representative that is here on Legacy Square Parking Lot?
I'd move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Odoman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Odoman?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Soluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That is the end of our normal agenda. One item left. Commission, it is your time. You have any questions for city staff or other commissioners? Please present them at this time.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Odoman?
I would just like to congratulate Commissioner Sobeluk and her family on being awarded the Prairie Family Business of the Year. Stefis has got a really great video on their social media accounts and stuff like, right now, talking about the history of the company and things like that. And having a, a company like that that was started in Dickinson and has grown to the lengths it has is pretty great. So congratulations to the Stefis family.
Congratulations. It is, it is, it's always nice to get recognized, especially for the true entrepreneurs that are out here in this community and, and how far they've gone. I think a lot of people don't understand, you know, what's been produced out of this, you know, side of the state and, and you, you guys as family and your company is just a, a prime example of that hard work and, and adaptability from, starting with church furniture.
Yeah.
To what you are today, so.
Well, we're just blessed to have a very entrepreneurial community and just a very supportive environment. And that's something that we see here in this community that we don't, you don't, when you visit with other businesses throughout different states, there's just not all that, being open to share and, and be, even though you're competitors in business, just working together. So I think it just is a testament to our community and what a great place this is here.
Yes. Any other comments or questions, Commissioners?
Just one, and Mr. Prowse brought up the Graves study. Any updates for us on that?
Commissioner Frederick, we did meet and discuss that. Ms. Carlson and HR Director Nomenick, we have taken some initial looks at it. We have provided feedback to, to her as far as some other updates that we would like with that. Our goal is to obviously bring that to the commission during the budget process to, to show you the, the wage study, but also bring some options, a couple of different options moving forward for the budget process.
Are we going to be able to see this draft soon?
Yes, correct.
Before the budget?
We can certainly get that to you, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any comments or questions? Now I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.